Auditorium with works by Duke Ellington, Richard Rogers, Dizzy Gillespie and
Every eight-year trip. She just talk?
Yes.
Good afternoon and we'll welcome everybody to the April 27th meeting of the Moscow Public Works and Finance Committee. John Weber on my right, I'm Wayne Kraus. We've got Art Becky there and City Supervisor Gary Redner. First item is approval of the April 13th minutes.
Looked good to me.
Don, you were here for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, minutes will stand approved. Second item, second quarter fiscal year. Don Palmer is not present at the moment.
Yes, he's right here.
There he is.
Nice save, Don.
I thought we were gonna push you off to the last agenda item.
I think we've done that a little once too often.
Well, you know, with Don, all it takes is one time. I got this figured out.
I'm here to just talk about the quarterly financial statements for period ending. Well, no, I need actually three of them. Need pause for a moment. And then I'll go this way with you guys. About 10 minutes ago, I noticed a mistake, so apologize for that. And I'll go through that.
You have one for me?
Yes.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Yeah, this one too, if you want to do. I don't need it. Anyways, an omission on my part, but I'll get to that in a minute. This quarterly financial report is for the month, second quarter, which is ending March 31 of 2015. So it covers September, October 1st through March 31 representing two quarters. Those two quarters, revenues was $6.6 million in the general fund. It includes a majority of the property tax because we had our property taxes end of January, but only includes revenue sharing monies for one quarter because we get the second quarter usually in April. So revenues are usually down a little bit and that's why we have the financial policies about, you know, three months working capital, that sort of thing that we've set aside for most all funds except for two, which are the internal service funds, which are two months. So having said that, we're seeming to be tracking pretty well. Also, the other variance is if you look at salaries and wages, we're at 43%. That's because one of the accrued periods won't happen until October for a full pay period, just about I was looking at that. So it's really just 12 of the 26 pay periods instead of 13, which we have halfway through the year, you'd expect 13, okay, because we pay every other week. So that's the two big changes with regards to all salaries and benefits throughout the different operating funds, which the operating funds are the chief operating fund, the general fund, street fund, parks and rec, the arts and water sewer sanitation and the internal service funds of fleet and information, okay? Those are the chief, the operating funds that have salaries in them. All the rest of them will be capital related. So the reason I handed out a handout is because what I noticed, I was looking at it and thinking, wow, how come revenues aren't way higher than expenditures? Because that's unusual. And it's because I admitted transfers.
Excuse me, Don, is this handout, is this different than what's in our packet?
That's what goes, the ones I handed out are different than the ones that are in the packet. And they're different because of the transfers. We have operating transfers in the general fund and I had missed that for some reason or another. It's $1,088,148 and that packet did not have that number, which is about halfway through the year, you would expect that. So that was the change that fairly significant for operations. So that's the only change I made was in, it happened to be the general fund, it wasn't all the other funds. Picked up on those pretty well, but just missed that one. The, so kind of going through back to the general fund then, not too many other highlights. Operations were fine in that regard. It's an operating budget, street fund, expenditures are only at 33%. If you think about what kinds of things we do in the construction season, then we haven't hit that yet, right? So you'd expect that. And the street revenues, a major portion of the gas tax monies, we've only received one quarter of that, which is why it's also at 41%. Parks and rec, the majority of those funds are transfers in, so the revenues of $924,000 are reflective of the transfers plus some fees for charges and then the expenditures accordingly. Reason you'd see parks and rec salaries being lower than the other operating funds at 43% is because of the swimming pool, okay? So the swimming pool isn't in operation yet. Moscow school district play fields, of course, we haven't really got that up and going. We did recently purchase a mower and that's in this, that number, $59,250 bucks and it's a trailer too, I believe, not just the mower. 1912.
Couldn't we get a more expensive one?
I think it's more productive one.
Fifty-nine thousand.
There's also a field groomer that is being purchased as well. Correct. I don't think the field groomer's in this number yet. The 1912 is the contractual and the utilities. Arts fund, the same is, it's nothing really, just starting, hadn't started at this point in the time of farmer's market or any of the other expenses that are in the arts fund. Transit is lower and this is the first year that we have that thing, that this fund in place. So it's a kind of a feel to see how it goes type thing. We're working on the budget for that as we're talking now, is for 2016 actually. And this kind of gives us a good sense of what our expenses might be. The water fund, 40% of revenue, 43%. Sewer, 50%, 43%. Sewer fund is always more consistent in its revenue stream than water and the reason because is the consumptive part of the water. We get half of our revenue basically in the summertime. Sanitation fund, that's fairly consistent. And we will be seeing the larger expenses when we get into the single stream recycling. Fleet fund, capital outlay $118,000. That might draw your attention to some. At this point, he's just starting to get his equipment ordered and some of it is already delivered. IS, fairly consistent in that area. And then we get into the other miscellaneous funds, the capital funds, water and sewers, capital expenditures. Most, probably the most significant of the capital projects is, is the Hamilton parks at $406,000 is related to this, the ball fields. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. And if I can't answer them here, I can find the answer.
We actually have budgeted for the underwater construction fund over 8 million and of course only $450,000 so far used utilized. We anticipate utilizing that or that carry over into next budget?
No, the water fund, when we put that together, we put the whole package together and of course, it's gonna be a three-year project and so that's not gonna be even close to that. I think we're, I'd planned, and you can talk to Les about this, but it's the three booster stations first. We don't have land for the second three and so that will happen in the second year and then, and then the well, so the design, so.
I think now is an appropriate time to remember or to remind people that, that even though we passed a $59 million budget, that generally speaking, we'll spend in the neighborhood of 30 million during the year, depending upon how much capital improvement project funds we expend. When we take a look at the water construction funds of over 8 million, we have sewer construction over three, sanitation over three, capital projects over 4 million. And as you said, Don, we're not gonna, there's no way we can spend all that money this year, but the money is there and it's identified for specific projects, which will then carry over. And as you said, for the water fund, it's a three-year period of time.
Sure.
A good chunk of that, of course, is well number 10.
Right.
And so this is the reason why, even though we pass a budget twice what we spend, that's why we do it.
That's exactly right. And I'm glad you pointed that out. In fact, we break that out in the slower section of the financial statements, $20.5 million is that capital. And then the operating funds are above that and they're in a little more detail because we can split the capital in its fund structure and pretty much capitalize all of those things within that fund. Water's strictly designated for water, sewer is strictly for sewer, sanitation for sanitation and on and on. And so you're exactly right. Out of a $59 million budget, we'll spend, you know, 3 million on capital probably. And one of the things that we will be doing in the course of the next year is trying to narrow that down a bit by doing long-range financial planning and then the long-range plan will show when those things will be coming online and it'll be more directive that way.
And I think it's also important to point out the fact that we cannot utilize funds that have been identified, and I'll go back and identify again, the $8 million water fund. We can't take money out of that and put it into streets.
Exactly right.
Because that money has been bonded or it's been, it's grant money, but it's been, it's been brought in following guidelines specifically to utilize it for that particular project. So that's the other question I've had people ask me sometimes is, why can't we just take money out of that and use it for this? And that's the reason.
That's exactly right. The general fund is the chief operating fund of a city government, any city government. It could be county, it could even be a 911 center where they only deal with one thing, they always have a general fund. That's chief operating fund of the city and it has more things than just a special revenue, which is streets or parks or capital projects. They're very special in nature, the revenues are earmarked for a special purpose. And then you get into the enterprise funds. And enterprise funds, again, are designated for those things that you just mentioned. So you're absolutely right.
Okay. Don, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think as long as we're pointing things out. The other thing we should point out is that we cannot spend more money that comes in. So on any one of these items on the budget, they're all revenue driven.
Correct.
You cannot, if for some reason we don't get some money in, we simply can't spend it and that's when Gary gets a hold of every department head and the mayor gets a hold of the department's heads and says, cut your budget by so many percentage because we have to balance at the end of the year, at the end of our fiscal year.
We haven't, and you're absolutely right. We budget that way and every department head gets a monthly expense report, the council does as well. And in addition to that, we haven't had to do a holdback memo because of revenue shortfalls of that nature for, since what, Gary, 2009 or 10?
10.
10. So it's been a while, but you're absolutely right. The revenues are, we track those and we'll be following up with those, but we've been fairly conservative in our revenue estimates and actually pretty well on track with the revenue estimates that we've predicted for all of the funds, so.
Art?
Fine by me.
Hey, I guess we're ready to rock on this.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we got here? Next item is pedestrian curb ramp improvement project. We've got Scott Bontrager will be with us at presenting that. Scott, how are you today?
Before you use the 2015 pedestrian curb ramp improvement project bid results and it's a brief history on this, again, this is a ITD funded program provided in a grant form from state funding that assists with improving the pedestrian ramps on the highway infrastructure. Every year, they put out the ability for a local agency to apply for up to $60,000 to improve ramps. This one, we had applied for a grant last spring and were approved for the grant on this one. And just recently, one of the last council meetings, the city council had approved the cooperative agreement for this project. And after that, we put it out to bid, put it out to bid to six local contractors. We got three bids back. The three were from Knox Concrete, Curtis Concrete and McCall's Classic Construction. This year again, like the past other two years, McCall's Classic came in with a low bid. This year, they had a bid of $38,536, which was much lower than the engineer's estimate for the project. So like we have in the past couple of years, we have talked with ITD about the possibility of adding some more ramps on their infrastructure and we're currently in the process of getting basic designs on those so we can add those into the project with this. So for this, staff is recommending awarding the project to McCall's Classic Construction for the amount they have with the ability to not, you know, add additional ramps to not exceed the, the contract amount that we have for $59,950, which we should be able to add probably another four ramps to it.
John?
My only question, we've got 38, 536 was the bid and out of an original starting at 59,950 with 13,2, if for example, we were not allowed to add anything to it, the 13,2 would not stay the same, it would go down also?
Yeah, I believe we just get reimbursed for the expenses that are used for.
Okay. I'm fine with it. Art?
Yeah, I think anytime we can take advantage of low bids to extend the project, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
How many more, how many years worth of drops do we have left to do? We've been doing them now for three, four years.
Well, coming up here pretty soon too, ITD is looking at doing a paving project in 19 and they have asked us to continue applying for this to assist them with improving another 35 ramps. So we will continue doing this as long as the funding's there.
All right. Well, we're gonna certainly recommend acceptance to this, move it forward and put it on the consent agenda.
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Les McDonald is going to present something we've talked about for the last couple of years now. This is well number 10 drilling and this is the consultant professional services contract. Bye, Les.
Good afternoon. Yes, this is a project we've been wanting to get to for quite some time and glad to be in front of you today to present a draft services contract for Goldar Associates. They operate out of Court Lane and also over in the Portland, Seattle corridor. Hydrogeology firm, among other things. They would be providing for us the design services to actually put the drilling of the well out to bid. So this is the first phase of the construction of the project would be to bring in a well drilling firm and have them actually make the hole in the ground and put in the casings that are appropriate for that particular design. Also with that, the contract would include construction management and onsite inspection for us. When you're dealing with well drilling, it's very critical to have somebody there that's very intimate with the design, very knowledgeable of the geology that we're dealing with and the effects or the aspects of drilling, particularly deep wells like this. So there's a fair bit of time in here in this draft contract for them to be onsite during critical portions of the drilling operation. They wouldn't be there every day, but they would be there certainly when we're transitioning from one zone of basalt to another zone where we get through water bearing sections, some of the surface work. And then as we get down towards where we think the bottom's going to be in helping us assess when to stop drilling. It's one of the things about well drilling is, you know, you don't really know for sure 100% what's under the surface. We're fortunate here, we have a very good understanding of the geology of the basin and our wells in the vicinity, including our own well number nine, it gives a pretty good idea of what's there. But as we go through, you know, you have some separation between this well and others or likely going to be some variations as compared to other wells. So having the design firm there to assist us in, you know, assessing, okay, this is a good water bearing zone, could we get better, should we go deeper, have we gone far enough? Those types of things become pretty important because well drilling is an expensive endeavor, especially on a per foot basis. This particular well is meant to, of course, be redundant to well number nine. It will be of similar size, roughly 2,500 gallon per minute range. The depth of the well is anticipated to be 1,200 to 1,300 feet, which is getting down there. So that's why we went out there, RFQ processed to find qualified firms that were interested in assisting us. We reviewed, I believe, seven altogether and came down to Goldar's being our first choice. And what's before you then is the draft agreement to provide those design and construction management services.
Art?
I think it's something we should move forward on. One question, it's probably a little off topic, but are there any legal applications we have to make to drill a well?
Yes, there are. There are a number of things. We actually have to apply to the Department of Water Resources for a permit to drill the well. And we've also had to go through an environmental assessment, which is complete, and a site assessment with DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, which is also complete and approved. So we're essentially at that point where we would just actually make the application for the permit, which is a pretty minor application, and then we're ready to go.
Cool. I think another thing we ought to keep in mind or bring attention back to is, as you said, this is a redundant well.
That is correct.
And we've had problems with number nine.
Yes.
And they have been expensive problems.
Yes.
And so if we can come in with another well, even if it's out of the same pool of water, which they all are, if we can come in with a new well that hopefully is gonna have the newest technology and that sort of thing, it's expensive, but if number nine goes down again, we've got number 10 or if we're using 10 and it goes down, we've got number nine and we'll be able to continue supplying water, you know, for the community. And so, yeah, I think we ought to.
Les, you indicated these wells are gonna be in the neighborhood of that 1,300-foot depth level.
Approximately.
How does this come out? And you'll have to just refresh my memory, I could go back and look at data, but what are the other wells in Pullman and Moscow, what are their depths? Isn't WSU has one that's pushing close to 2,000, do they?
They do. The Pullman, or excuse me, the Moscow wells, of course, are in the upper Wanapum aquifer and the lower Grand Ronde aquifer. The ones in the Wanapum tend to be in the 500-foot range. They vary a little bit. Pumps are in the 350, something like that. For those that are in the Grand Ronde, six, eight and nine, they vary from 1,000 to roughly 1,300. So they're down there quite a ways. The pumps are not that deep. Generally, they, you'll see casing down to roughly, say, 700 feet and then a kind of a water production zone under that, but the wells, the motors and pumps themselves are above that point. So they'll be in the, you know, 500 or so range. But because of the water producing zone for the Wanapum is that deep, you end up going beyond 700 feet down to 1,000 to 1,300. In Pullman, they don't have the Wanapum and so all their wells are deeper aquifer water. But again, in that case, the reason they don't have it is because the Wanapum thins in that area and so in essence, the Grand Ronde is higher and so their wells tend to be not quite as deep. The WSU well you're talking about was one that was drilled to the depth that they needed, but it was also, the players were encouraging that it go deeper so that they could get a better handle on further depth of the basalt flows out there and expand the knowledge for the basin. So, yeah, that one's pushing 2,000. I think the DOE well, which is between Moscow and Pullman's, similar in depth, it's down there quite a ways.
There was some concern a number of years ago when Hawkins was talking about putting in their shopping center, their development. We know that they drilled two wells.
Yes.
And they drilled two wells in close proximity to where well number 10 is going to be.
To the northwest.
But my understanding is those two wells were more designed as test wells, they're not at a great depth?
I can't really speak to that aspect of it. I believe they were drilled to be their production wells, but they're not nearly of the size and scale we're talking about.
Right. And so the concern that we had back, whatever it was, five, six years ago or whatever, was if those wells were ever put into production, considering the close proximity of 10 and nine to an extent, do we have an idea of what kind of an effect those wells would have on our wellhead pressures?
Well, without having, of course, well 10 in place, we really don't know there and that would be the closer of the two. The two wells on that site have not been put into production, so we have not seen any kind of influence, obviously, from those new wells. I don't believe they're as deep as our wells are or will be. And so I don't know that we'll see much of an impact, but, and again, they're smaller in production quantity.
Well, that's true. We don't know if they'll ever be put into production, but we do know that, that that company, those folks still hold the water rights.
They do.
For that area, so. But anyway, off subject a little bit, but well number 10 is a great thing. We're not utilizing any more of our, of Moscow's water rights.
Correct.
And as my understanding, we're still only using approximately 50 to 60% of what water rights we actually have.
Correct.
This doesn't increase it because it's redundant well to nine. Sounds like a good deal to me, let's move it forward. And what do you think? Put it on the regular agenda so we can make it more of a, of a public item so people can know more about it? Is that a good idea?
Certainly up to the council. Standard contract. Oh, all of our.
That's true.
You know, all of our questions have been answered and we announced the issues that might have been questioned. So I think we can put it on the consent agenda, to tell you the truth.
Thanks, Les.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, we're gonna talk about the Gormley Park tennis court renovation project. Tom Grenden will be presenting. Tom?
Thank you, Wayne. The city recently solicited bids from two pre-qualified bidders to install three new post-tension tennis courts at Gormley Park. The project calls for the installation of the three new courts, including fencing, gates, netting, surface coating and then striping for both tennis and pickleball. The three existing courts that are out there now have been out of service for over 10 years, as I understand it, and are in just poor condition due to cracking from faulty subsurfacing. Post-tension courts are designed with a much life, longer lifespan than a traditional asphalt courts. Majority of jobs these days are going towards post-tension as your shelf life, as it were, is much longer than asphalt. Gormley Park is located in a flood plain and we do have groundwater on the surface on occasion during inclement weather. Bids were received from the two qualified bidders. The low company, Tennis and Track Company out of Salt Lake City, and his bid, I'm sorry, was $175,292 and when we add in the construction allowance and the testing fee, comes out to just a shade over $200,000 for the installation. Consulted with engineering department on this asphalt versus concrete issue and it was decided that concrete installation would be far favorable for this due to the site and the location in a flood plain, okay? I've spoken with the low bid contractor recently, or via email, and his suggestion is that our location and the size of the job is what's driving the price here. The second bidder who came in $25,000 higher is out of Texas and hence longer travel distance and so forth. So I had spoken with city supervisor and the city treasurer or finance director, Don Palmer, and figured out a way that we could pay for this out of this year's budget if we tap some funds that are existing in the accumulation for a new playground. So I'm here to place that before you for your consideration and would welcome questions.
Clarification, when you said one of the things that was driving up the cost was our location, and when you meant our location, you mean location of Moscow, Idaho, being so far away from the contractor, not the location of the tennis courts?
That's correct.
Being in a flood plain?
That's correct.
However, being in a flood plain has a detrimental effect on essentially anything that goes in to that flood plain. Anything that's built, whether it's a building, whether it's tennis courts, whether it's a football field.
Correct.
Yeah, so they're all, okay.
Right.
I, Wayne, if I'm still up.
Go for it. Go right ahead.
I'm against this.
Why?
I think that the amount of money that we're talking about, two things, is more money than I want to spend on three tennis courts regardless of where they are. And number two, we have got any number of parks in Moscow that have not been developed that we've already designated as parks. And if we're going to continue with the policy of having parkland dedicated to us, I think we ought to take some of money, for example, this money, and use it to finish off a park or two.
Gary?
Yeah, you'll see a memo, you've noticed a memo in the backup, a memo from me and one from Dwight Curtis.
me and one from Dwight Curtis, uh, our Parks and Rec Director. Uh, the reason is that council in, in 2015 budget allocated $150,000 or appropriated $150,000 for this project. Project's been ongoing for years, uh, way predating Tom's employment with the city, Roger Blanchard. Our previous recreational facilities manager had brought that forward several times as, you know, they were deteriorating to the point where they couldn't be used as tennis courts anymore. What were we going to do with it? And the price escalated, and of course, now we're seeing that, uh, because of the, um, remote location of Moscow, I guess, in relation to where these firms are, we're, uh, going to be paying a premium price. In the meantime, as we pursue our, uh, strategic planning and the Parks and Rec, uh, master plan is completed, so on and so forth, one of the things that we've been discussing is what are the availability of recreational opportunities to our citizens, uh, based upon a, a little broader look. Uh, and the, the memo from Dwight, uh, in response to the question of how many tennis courts that are available in Moscow at this time, and how do we set? And as his memo indicates, the, uh, tennis courts that are owned by the Moscow School District and the University of Idaho, uh, is about 12 tennis courts, which is about the standard, the national recreation standard. Um, and they are available for public use when they aren't being utilized for, uh, UFI or Moscow School District purposes, and I think, uh, even some of the Moscow School District courts are used for, uh, City of Moscow Recreation Program purposes, um, which would be the same thing on these courts. They would be, be available for general public use when they're not being utilized for Moscow, uh, recreation purposes. So at that point, as we're moving forward, as, as John indicated, we have a lot of needs. The master plan points out that we have a lot of needs in recre, our parks, a lot of facilities needs. Uh, I think in this budget, you'll see a request for, uh, playground equipment as we move forward with that initiative, so on and so forth, and I think everybody can agree that we have way more needs than we have revenues to cover those needs. So at that point, in my discussions with Dwight was, is there, should this be re-looked at, not only because it's about 40% or 35% over what the original, uh, estimate had, had been made, but also in light of the fact that we appear to have sufficient tennis courts in Moscow without these, does it make sense to take a look at, um, maybe throwing it back into the prioritization pool to find out how it comes out? As Dwight indicated in his memo, it was bid later in the spring, so it is possible that, um, a rebid earlier next spring, if it makes the priority list, we could move ahead with that to see if we get any better bids. Dwight also points out that, uh, there is, these courts would be used for pickleball recreational activities, and there are no pickleball courts elsewhere in Moscow, so those are all the considerations.
Excuse me, what's pickleball?
I think it's where you hit a pickle, or, and I don't know.
It's, it's a game, uh, designed, it's very similar to tennis, but you're playing with a lighter hard racket like ping pong, and the court is shortened, and it's much easier to play than running, stretching, turning, stopping, so it's more of a quick ping pong type of game, and it's hot.
There's any kind of in-between ping pong and tennis then?
Correct.
Yeah.
Without a pickle.
Without a pickle. So, anyway, the, the purpose of, of putting it before you again is, um, and Tom, of course, would like to move ahead with the project if that's the council's direction. Uh, there are repercussions to that, and where we identified we would have additional monies available would require a reprioritization of funds that have been accumulated for playground equipment, so that impacts that program. So, um, in consultation with Don Palmer and Dwight, we're looking through that to see if we have that available. We could, however, again, you're impacting that program, so based upon all of that and the fact that we are trying to ask in our new planning paradigm, asking the questions, is this the right route to go? Does it require, should we sit back, reconsider? Is, what's going to be lost in the interim time? Obviously, the courts can't be used in that interim time, but is that something that the council would like to wait for? Uh, throw it back in the prioritization, would you like to move ahead?
All right.
Well, I'm kind of on the fence about how much bang for the buck the city and the citizens would be getting out of three tennis courts, because when I go around, I don't see a lot of use on the other existing tennis courts.
Pickle courts, too.
Those two. But, uh, whether the money could be better allocated elsewhere, so I'm leaning towards, let's put this thing back on hiatus, look into reprioritization and see where we shake out, and especially if we're having to raid other portions of the budget in order to adequately fund this, of which I'm not a great fan.
Dwight had some comments. He'd like, come on, go ahead, Dwight.
Um, I just wanted to throw this into the mix, too. The funding for the lights on this court was out of Land and Water Conservation Fund monies back in 1978, and we had $51,496, um, and just from what I read, I, I don't know, I don't think that was just for the courts. I think that included the lights for the ballfields. So I have to find out what the percentage is that went for the courts, but that's one of the, one of the drawbacks to accepting one of those kinds of grants, because it's forever. So we would have to come up with a different location. I don't know if we would have the light or if we would have to come up with that kind of funding to, uh, make up the difference in another location. Um, we did do upgrades, some pretty expensive upgrades to those lights, um, here, just, I don't know, it's been since I've been here, anyway, and that might cover that. I don't know. I would still have to...
Which lights you referring to?
Lights on the tennis courts.
These?
Yes. So we're, we're tied legally to some degree there. I just don't know at what point, uh...
Yeah, but, nah, I think we also made improvements to the Gormley Park balllights, too.
Yes, the whole, yes. And it's all part of the same grant.
How far, how long ago was that?
1978.
1978?
Well, for the grant.
We made the upgrades?
Yeah.
Oh, probably six years ago?
At least six, seven years ago.
Dwight, do we have, um, other existing parks that are unimproved that, uh...
Yes.
Could be turned into tennis court parks?
Well, I, I think you could put tennis courts just about anywhere.
Well, without, you know, having to reinvent the wheel, uh, you know, essentially some flat ground, uh, that is not in the floodplain where we could put in tennis courts without the cost of these, or do you think that is asking too much of the situation?
Well, I think, you know, when we're talking about moving this money possibly to work on another park, the costs are there. It doesn't really matter where we're at. You, I mean, start at 150,000 and move up for just about everything, including restrooms, and, uh, and we have a lot of undeveloped parks, so you're going to have a lot of eyebrows every time we come to see you on any new developments. Tennis courts, um, of course, they take a, a lot more space if, and this, in this case, it's three tennis courts, um, and it uses a considerable size, you know, a piece of a park, so it'd have to be a pretty good-sized park to begin with, unless that's all you were going to put there. And a lot of our parks, uh, we typically end up with land that's around floodplains and things like that. It's pretty normal.
Well, it's, yeah, usually not the best land in a development is the part that is going to go for parkland dedication, but, uh, I am personally much more in favor of playground equipment, um, especially since we've got options for people that play tennis and most of the playgrounds that you go around with, at most any time of the day, you'll find people there using them, and, uh, and not only that, but, uh, you know, keep those kids tired, they're usually pretty good.
I'd like to go back to this discussion on these lights. I understand you to say we did an upgrade to the lighting on the tennis courts about six years ago.
And the whole, the whole complex.
But including the tennis courts?
Yes.
Specific lighting for the tennis courts?
Yes.
But the tennis courts haven't been playable for 10 years.
Correct.
Why did we do lighting when they weren't playable?
Well, there was anticipation that we were going to upgrade, um, the, uh, the tennis courts themselves, and, I mean, we were already doing the electrical, so you needed to...
So it was just a step. Okay, so the following question then would be, it would seem to me we could take the lighting that was put around those tennis courts and put them someplace else and still be within qualifications of whatever grant we got for those.
True. It would have to be approved, but it, it just depends on how tight they're going to be with their requirements. Would it have to be around another tennis court? That I don't know.
Gotcha.
Could it just be in a park? Could it be any kind of sports? Um, I don't know. We would have to...
Playground. Look into that. You know, we, you're talking about this way, you know, the money to, to these tennis courts, and in the same breath, we're talking about money for playground equipment. We just spent a bunch of money last fall on two of our parks, get new concrete slabs and get everything done so we can put in new top playground equipment in, what, two parks? East City Park and Rotary Park, correct? Does that mean that if we were to prove this, that there'd be no money for that playground equipment?
Well, they're not, they're not related. I mean, they're not...
Money's money. My understanding is you're talking about taking money that you would have utilized to buy playground...
No, no, that was for Lena Whitmore, for a few, you know, that's a park that we're going to...
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to come down against this also. I agree with John. Uh, I think it's an extraordinary amount, uh, for something that, uh, we really aren't showing that we have a need for at this particular time. We have a lot of parks that are being designated all the time as we have new subdivisions going in, and parkland dedication happens with no money to develop them, and so I think that this need, you guys need to keep this money and figure out a better way to spend it. Gary?
Yeah, if I, I want to make sure that you don't draw the wrong conclusion from my memo, and that is not, I'm not asking you to change course at this point and redirect all the work that's been done and say, let's take this money and use it somewhere else. As much as it's come in significantly higher than what the expectation was, you have additional information that may impact the prioritization decision, so I would encourage the council, rather than make the decision right now to take this money, put it towards some other purpose now, to considering this in light of other priorities as we move into the new budget or future budgets.
The action that's requested of us is to recommend the city council acceptance of the low bid or instruct as otherwise.
Provide further direction.
It's this committee's recommendation that this gets shelved, that we not spend the money on that. I don't see any need to take this to council. I think we can just let it go right here, understanding that, yes, you need to do what Gary's talking about, and let's, let's go back and, and look at, at priorities, and if this becomes one of the priorities later on down the road, so be it.
The, because it is a bid, it needs to be officially accepted or rejected by council. So we need to take it forward.
Okay.
Uh, and if you want to have the discussion in regular session, I think that would make sense. If you just want to recommend rejection, uh, that can be done as well. We're just looking for that direction.
Why don't we just recommend rejection? Put it on the consent agenda, and if somebody wants to pull it off, they can.
Do we, I think what you just said is, we don't have the option of putting it on the consent agenda. It has to go in front of the council.
No, it could, it's got to go in front of the council, but it can be sent to council with direction on the consent agenda that it be, the bids be rejected. Uh, however, I believe what you're, the comments you're making now are such that you want the council to consider how they want to proceed with this sort of situation, and I would, that's why I recommend for regular agenda so you can have that discussion. That'd be my recommendation. That'd be fine.
All right. On the regular agenda. This committee recommends, uh...
Rejection or reconsideration.
And I don't want you people to get the idea that, uh, your time was wasted, although you might feel a little bit that way, but, uh...
All the day's work, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Some people's kids.
Thanks. All right, uh... Where we at here?
Last, Neighborhood Greenways.
Kevin Lilly.
I'm going to come play, too, Wayne.
Oh, where's Kevin?
Can't stay away.
Oh, there he is. We're actually going to talk about the Neighborhood Greenways Pilot Project. You know, we tried to put this off, because Walter's one who wanted to hear about it, and, and Walter just can't seem to stick around, so we're just going to do it.
We'll just do it anyway.
Can I run upstairs?
Yeah. Provide him a video feed. We'll email him a link to the video later on.
Ooh.
I appreciate that, being able to bring this to you, because it was two months ago when I was ready to go.
You need to pull that further?
Uh, does it come out? Yeah, there we go. Thank you. Um, just wanted to let you know where we are with the Neighborhood Greenways implementation. We, uh, if you recall from the transportation plan, there was quite a large, uh, component of bicycle and pedestrian projects, and from the transportation plan that you've all seen and, and approved, uh, one of the recommendations was that we implement a pilot project, and we're ready to do that. Um, this is a map of the future system, but the highlighted area is what we were intending to, to install as a pilot project, um, have some public involvement meetings, um, set up a procedure for people to let us know how they like it, what they don't like, uh, before we go expanding that. We'll get a, two, two east-west routes, and then the, the north-south route you see from Nesbur's, uh, through Park Drive and by Lena to the, uh, to the HERC.
The, the reason that we selected the, the pilot routes that we did is, you know, one of the main things we want to do is have destinations along the routes, so that we have places that people want to get to and where they're coming from, and so they link back to the downtown area, and then you'll see as, as the routes move across, they, they come across close to parks, schools, the HERC, the pool, the fairgrounds, um, so these were the routes that we thought would be good routes. Um, the, the route selection, as Kevin mentioned, went through a, a pretty involved process. We had, we had organized rides where we had people ride different routes and provide feedback on the routes, and it went through the review of the Transportation Commission and several in-house reviews in order to get to the point that we feel fairly comfortable with these pilot routes.
So those are just some of the criteria that, that we use when we're looking at implementing something like this. Uh, we want to, we don't want to have a, a large effect on traffic. We want to select areas where there's already a, a relatively slow, slow speed, uh, yet keep it as direct as we can and make it comfortable for people that might not normally, normally be comfortable riding bikes. So places with the least amount of traffic and making it a nice neighborhood route. It's just, uh, the factors. We're going to include signage. Um, we're looking at minimizing any kind of traffic, uh, changes, uh, just to make sure we can get the, the smooth flow of, of vehicles as well as, as bicycles without, uh, any conflict points. As we go along, we'll be looking at and see if we need to do something there.
The, uh, traffic calming up in the, uh, upper left quadrant, um, that, um, that kind of jumped out at me. That's, uh, that's not a, a traffic circle. That's just something that is put in the middle of the intersection that makes both vehicles and people on bikes pay attention and...
Yeah, that, that specific, uh, symbol is, is for that. It's, and it, that, that's one, uh, one approach to traffic calming. There are different, you can do bulbouts on, on pedestrian crossings, you can do, there's, there's several things that you can do. Um, there are actually, the city of Lewiston recently constructed several of these on a corridor, um, where they were trying to effectuate some traffic calming, and they, they used some of these small circles.
Who do they use? Like, big platters or something?
They, they pour curb, they'll pour a curb circle in the middle, and so it, it looks almost like a roundabout, but, but it, it functions like a normal intersection, but it's, as John mentioned, you, they have the, the structure in the middle that just slows people down as they go through.
Okay.
But that specific icon was just there to, to represent traffic calming in general rather than any specific treatment.
How have the, uh, things that we put in the street, uh...
Sheros?
Yeah, the sheros have, do we have any informa, I like them. Uh, I think that if you can get one person, both bicyclist and vehicle, to adapt to them a little bit, I think we've pretty much accomplished part of our goal. Have, have...
We've, we've received a lot of positive feedback from the community on the sheros. Um, I think those in combination with our signs, asking people to walk their wheels on the sidewalks, um, we, we certainly still see people riding the sidewalks, but, but, uh, anecdotally, we have received a lot of feedback and, and very positive feedback, um, and, and that's part of the hope of this pilot project, is that we've been, we've worked with some of the local bicycle shops, um, we're, we're really trying to improve our outreach, and a lot of it is... We're, we're really trying to improve our outreach and a lot of it is just learning how to use the facility. How, how do I behave if, if I'm in this place, either as a cyclist or as a motorist? And so I think you're right, John. I think that, that as people become more educated and become more comfortable with it, it, it functions really well.
This slide was just representing, again, the criteria that one would use to determine these routes. One of the most important is to avoid the transit routes. There's so many conflicts with buses coming to the curb and back. Just what we're hoping to do is sign and stripe streets that are already slower moving. There will be a maximum speed of 20 miles an hour on these streets, but they'll be residential streets and I am not expecting any citizen kickback from that, but again, we're going to have public awareness meetings and farmer's market and really solicit people's input, especially the folks that live on, on those routes.
With, with these being, as Kevin had mentioned, residential streets that are selected for low traffic volumes, we seldom, never receive complaints, people calling and saying, people are going too slow on my street. That's, that's not the complaint we get. And so that's why there's really not a huge concern in these residential areas. Typically, people are traveling at a slower rate anyway and the people that, that live in that area are the ones that are frequenting the street and they don't seem to mind when people slow down a little bit while their kids are out playing in the yard.
This is a shot of Tyler on a bad day installing a shero.
That's a good day. That's a real good day.
Uh, yeah, John, you mentioned the, the ones we have down on Main Street. People have been happy with those. One of the other components will be signage, wayfinding as well as distances to key locations.
And time.
And time, yeah. This sign came from Portland where they have a really good signing program where if you're on a bicycle, you can, within a few blocks, you can find a sign that'll tell you how far it is from, or how much time it's gonna take to get downtown or some other location.
The, the key component to having the times on these signs, that, that those times are calculated at a fairly relaxed pace on a bicycle is that a lot of people, the, the target population or the interested but concerned riders, people who think, yeah, I might want to do that, but they have their concerns because a lot of times, those of us who haven't been on a bike since we were 14, playing cops and robbers around the neighborhood, don't realize how quickly you can actually get somewhere on a bicycle. And so it's, it's, you know, you see the miles, but how that translates to time that it takes to actually get there is something that people are typically surprised by, how quickly you can do it. And so that's one of the key reasons that we'll include minutes to destinations as well as distance.
You were talking about the less traveled streets. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't put the sheros in the more traveled streets.
There, there is the option to, to use sheros and have a shared lane. Now, a shared lane and a greenway are two different things. So we could potential, just for example, perhaps on the uphill portion of Third Street, if we only had enough room for one bike lane on Third, you might look and say, okay, let's do a shared lane in one direction and a bike lane in another direction. And that would be a shared lane. But the, the greenways are intended to be, the real, the real target, as I'd mentioned, is, is the interested but concerned. These are supposed to be very safe-filling facilities so that someone who wants to go from, from the north end of town to downtown to the farmer's market and wants to take their kids on a bike, they know, okay, if I take this route, this will be a very comfortable biking route. So no, it doesn't preclude us from putting a shared lane elsewhere, but these are very specific facilities that were chosen for a comfort level in riding.
Okay. And also, especially concerning the wayfinding, are you guys working with Pathways Commission folks who've been harping on wayfinding signs for some while? Is there some cross-talk between staff and the Pathways folks?
I haven't specifically spoken with them about the signing for, for the greenways, no.
Yeah, it might be good to get some input from the Pathways folks.
The Transportation Commission is starting work on that right now. We've been looking at signage like this and starting to identify where it would be appropriate to put this type of signage and what destinations should be on these signs. And so part of that discussion has been including the Pathways Commission to figure out the transitions from the path system to the bicycle network within the community.
Yeah, because I think it's an overlap among all of these divergent groups. I think bringing in input from each would certainly help smooth the way for all of this and be more efficient altogether.
Just another shot of a shared roadway. This is, you may have seen this before, but part of the justification for the 20 miles an hour is this rather telling graphic of, of the percent of death by getting hit by a motor vehicle at 20 miles an hour. It's, it goes way down, even versus 30. So that's pretty much, well, it is the standard nationally for this kind of facility. And that's the last slide, just a rehash of the original, at least our, our initial pilot project.
So we, we have the materials in hand and plan to start installation on these pilot routes early this summer. So we've, we've got them built into the work schedule now and really excited, hope to have a lot of community support and maybe we'll try and put together some sort of ribbon cutting or something and make an event of it.
Get the word out, let everybody know the good stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I, I really like the fact that you worked your way around destination points so that you're not just saying, we'll ride your bike down this street.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to go someplace and like you said, and you've got your kids and you want to get to here, yeah, you can get there. And you can get there and feel good about having your six or eight-year-old not get run over by somebody going 40 miles an hour.
Yeah, the eventual goal is to have a greenway close enough, say, within a quarter mile of most folks so they know, if I can get to there, I know I'm safe or safer on that greenway.
That's good.
Is that all you got? That's what you have? You know, I think this is a really good idea. I'd be really hesitant to put sheros, for instance, on the eastbound lane of Third Street simply because it's an arterial, carries a lot of traffic and it carries traffic generally pushing 35 miles an hour a lot of times. And I've experienced situations in other communities, Key West Florida being one of them, where shero's in the street and they actually have signs that say bicycles can take up the entire street and if you're driving a car, you're just, you're gonna follow the bicycles. On our main arterioles, that scenario won't work and it would cause some friction between your automobiles and your bicycles, but I'm really familiar with the northeast section of Moscow and the streets that you've identified there as being perfect for that with a 20 mile an hour speed limit, I think is a great selection.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Les, you might as well stay here. Are you gonna talk a little bit about downtown parking?
I just, I have no problem at all if they were to put traffic calming and stuff even on Third Street, you know.
Good for the tar business. Well, sure. Hi, Les. Welcome back.
Thank you. Well, another item that has kind of been out there on our agenda for a while and now we're getting a chance to talk about is the kind of the status of the parking situation downtown and in particular, as it relates to the use of the city parking lots and the permit system that we have in place. So we thought it'd be good to give you a little bit of background on where we are today and, and what we're talking about and then we'll kind of give an update on, on current conditions. As you'll recall, we have four public parking lots in the downtown area, North Jackson, South Jackson, City Hall and the Jefferson Street Lot. They vary in size. Of course, the largest of those being the South Jackson Street, the smallest being just right out here behind City Hall. We have, over the years, done a number of parking surveys. Some of these go back to when we were looking at modifying parking on Main Street in some of the downtown areas within the couplet and what effect that, that would have versus what was the usage of the parking lots, you know, that inner relationship. So we started some of the surveys back in 2009, did a couple of them that year, follow-up in 2011 when we were seeing how those changes had an effect. And then most recently, we've done one this spring in March. And that was really in anticipation of this discussion and getting an update on, on how we're doing out there. These charts, there's a lot of numbers here and I'm just gonna touch on a few, but these charts, we've started back in 2009. And we show an average number and percentage of usage and a maximum in men for a couple of different conditions. One is how many of the spaces within the lot are used by people that are displaying a permit in their car versus how many of the parking spaces are used by all the cars. So how many stalls are in use? So in September of 2009, we were seeing an average of about 22% of the stalls being used by permit holders, whereas roughly 62% of the stalls were in use by all users at that point. Those numbers went down a little bit in December of '09 to 21% and roughly 58%. In the February 11, came back up again, 27% for permit holders, 27% and 65% for all vehicles in the South Jackson Lot. And then most recently, you see here, the 20, roughly 24% and 57. So it does cycle and I thought it'd be a little easier to see it in a graphical format. So this is for the South Jackson Street Lot, September of '09, December '09, and 11 and '15 surveys. And you can see for all the vehicles that are out there, we've ranged from usage during the surveys of just over 60%, slightly below, roughly 65, a little bit down below. And then the permit holders being in the 20 to 25, 28% range, kind of roaming up and down through there. Keeping in mind, the South Jackson Street Lot is the largest of them, so one or two cars here and there doesn't have a great impact. That is not the case in the City Hall Lot. There's only 12 spaces. And so one or two cars make a large difference in terms of percentage of usage. So that's why this is much more aggressive up and down. But again, overall ranging from, you know, 60 to 80%, even down to, well, 50, I guess, for total usage. And the permit holders, a higher percentage overall permit holders here in the low 30s up to upper 60s in that range. Again, I think that's part of it is just there are fewer stalls, so one permit holder makes a big difference in the percentages. But also there seems to be a tendency for the users here to be either employees of the city or employees of businesses just immediately around City Hall. And even a few students here and there, we see. The Jefferson Street Lot, which again is across the street here behind us to the east, a little more consistent, but actually tending upward, which I, I find is interesting as compared to all the others. Starting overall usage in the low 40s up into the mid 50s today and permit holders from the low 20s up to the mid 30s. Again, some of that may be students, maybe other employees in the neighborhood that are recognizing that that lot is actually a little easier to get into as a few more stalls than the City Hall Lot. And then the last was North Jackson Street Lot. Overall usage is pretty steady, just sitting right about 70%. That's probably a factor of what's around it. There are a number of businesses there. Not a lot, a lot in the way of residences. And so it's probably a fairly consistent group of users, I would imagine. They're using, utilizing that lot to, to go to those particular businesses or work in those businesses. Permit holders are, are down a bit, but also climbing here the last couple of cycles. So that's, that's a good thing in that, you know, I guess people are more interested in using the lots for longer term with a permit than perhaps just taking their chances and having to move their vehicle every three hours or perhaps coming off the street where they have to move every three hours instead going to a permit and a lot where they can stay all day. If we look at all the lots in aggregate, we hover in that 60 to 65% usage. So what that means is we're sitting 35 to 40% empty during these surveys. So that's something to keep in mind when we get to discussion about number of permits we might consider offering to the public. And then the permit holders are in that, again, low 20 to 30% range in all the lots combined. So to look a little bit at some of the detail and, and we do a survey periodically, or summary of the surveys periodically. And those are distributed. I did bring copies for you today in case you haven't seen the latest one. But the numbers here are representative of what's in this latest summary. What we do is when a permit is sold by the police department, they have a survey form that we, we ask that applicant to fill out so that they can give us some information about, you know, who they are and, and how they anticipate using the permits. Helps inform us in terms of how we might want to manage the system. So just some summary numbers here, one of the things we ask is which lot are you most likely to use with your permit? And of course, the one that's the most popular is the South Jackson Street Lot. The 2014 numbers, so just last year in total, a little better than 50% of the anticipated usage by the permit holders. Not surprising. There's a lot of residential users in that neighborhood around that lot, plus a fair number of businesses there, so it's, it makes some sense. The City Hall and Jefferson Lots, of course, are at the lower end as one would expect. And then as compared to the cumulative amounts, fairly comparable. You know, we've seen a little bit higher numbers in Jackson over the years. So slightly down in 2014. The others are generally in the range, but again, maybe a little climb in the Jefferson Lot coming up, which we saw that in, in some of the graphs we just looked at. One of the questions we ask folks is, okay, what is your intended destination, if you will, for which you'll be using this parking permit? You know, what, why do you need one? And we've only actually had one individual over the years say, hey, it's, I want to go downtown and use the amenities downtown, the park or the playground. Most of the folks are employees and this is, these are cumulative numbers here in these two columns. So the employees are making up 46%. So again, pushing half of the permits that we sell. And then downtown residents are another, and the other, a large chunk, if you will, about roughly 40%. So those two together are in the neighborhood of 85% of the total permits sold. Not surprising. I mean, you know, when we looked at parking some years ago, the concern was that we had a lot of employees on the street. They were doing the three-hour shuffle where everybody'd come out and basically trade parking spots and then go back to work. And then also the concern that was expressed by a lot of residents downtown about where do I park? I mean, there, there's something like 700 units downtown upstairs. Where do all those people park if they have a vehicle? Well, this provides an opportunity to do that and we're seeing that in the numbers. Outside of those two items, the next large one, of course, is the business owners and managers, which, you know, they're getting associated with the business. You would expect that. And it's pretty low. Students are fairly small. That is probably a good sign in that we've priced these permits such that they're higher than the lower-end permits on U of I.
And we're still that.
And we're still that way. And I, I'm not quite sure where we sit now with the new NSA parking lots, but I think we may actually still be a little higher than those that they've recently implemented. That was somewhat intentional, our, our design of the rate structure because we wanted to make sure that we weren't getting students parking downtown, using up the, the lots in the business district to walk to campus. And so that's a pretty good sign in the numbers that we're seeing there. Okay, in terms of the permits that are out there, we have in the past, through the council, had discussions about how many should there be? And there've been a couple of different numbers. It's crept up over the years. We've been sitting at 130 permits for probably three years now, maybe even four, so quite a while. Those permits are all in use and there is a waiting list. When these numbers were put together, which was in March, we currently had a waiting list of 21 folks at that point. On average, since we started tracking this in 2010, it's run about 12. So that would tend to indicate that there is certainly more demand than we're able to fulfill with the limitation of permits that we offer, the 130. So one of the questions, and really there'll be two today, is what might we do about that and what could we change if we want to change anything? In looking at the overall usage of the lots, seeing that 60 to 65% usage and having, you know, 30, 35% vacancies, that tells me that there's still room to add vehicles into the system. And obviously there's times when the lot's 85, 90% full because it's, you know, lunchtime or it's dinner time on a Friday night or something like that. And so you're always gonna have those, you know, peaks and, and the valleys on the other end, but overall, it looks like there's still capacity. So with that in mind, I would suggest a number perhaps in the range of 150 permits be allocated by the city and made available. If we were to do that, then, and, and if the waiting. If we were to do that, then, and if the waiting list was still sitting at 21, we would essentially remove those folks from the waiting list and sell them permits, with perhaps one exception. That number goes up and down, so it may not be 21 today. If we're looking historically at the 2010 number and seeing that we've averaged about 12 on the waiting list, then we wouldn't have a waiting list based on our average number and actually have a little bit of capacity beyond who's currently coming and asked for a permit. So something in that range, I think, might be an appropriate next step if we want to bump it up a little bit in terms of numbers of permits. And then, the second piece and the second question will come from the rate. When you look at rates of permits and number of permits available, there's a bit of a balancing act there. The more you raise the rate, there's a tendency to discourage some folks from buying the permits that might otherwise buy them, right? So if you raise it too high, then the numbers you're going to sell are going to go down, even though you make more of them available. If you keep it low, then you're going to sell a lot of permits and perhaps sell more than you have available, which perhaps is our case right now. So our current rates right now, on a monthly basis, we sell them at $12, quarterlies are $30, and annuals are 85. Those are pretty nice and attractive rates, and that's probably why we have a waiting list, frankly. So I actually am going to suggest that we look at possibly raising those rates a bit. I was shooting for in the range of 10%, give or take, particularly on the annual rate, going from 85% to 95%. Again, that keeps us above U of I. It's still a reasonable rate for an annual purchase. You know, you're looking at less than $10 a month. The quarterly would then drop, say, to $35, which is less than, you know, or excuse me, if you bought four quarters, you'd be more than the annual, so it encourages the annual purchase. And then, the monthly at 13, so a slight increase there. What that will tend to do is, as I mentioned, perhaps slow slightly the demand. And so hopefully, we find a balance in there of just a little more availability and just a little bit less demand based on a slightly higher price. So that's the thought. I did want to mention that Councilmember Steed, before he left, came to talk to me about this, and he encouraged something like this. He was, I think, supportive of the idea of perhaps a bit of a bump in the rates and a bump in the number of permits available, so this seemed to be consistent with what he was thinking as well. He just wanted me to convey that to you, since he wasn't here, to express it himself. So any questions that you might have?
Question, we'll throw it out for discussion. Where are we at compared to the university rates in their cheapest lot?
I did not have a chance to check their current rate for their blue, I think it's blue, outlying permits. They had been, I believe, in the 65 range here in the last couple of years. They may have come up a little.
Per year?
But I think we're still, per year, yeah. So I think we're still, you know, a fair bit above them.
Comments?
Oh, actually, I was a little surprised to hear the percentage of use. However, I've never been able to not find a parking place in the south lot. Now, I may, depending on how lazy I was, I may have to make a couple of passes through before I found one that was as close as I wanted it. But I've never, I've never been able to not find one, and that includes taking away the parking that we have in front of the MSI building. And so...
And if I may, just to follow up on that, if you look back in these statistics, the maximum percentage of vehicles in that south lot, so you see there in 11, we're sitting at 87%, 79% total usage, 92%, 93%, that was as high as we got, and 78. And these were over a period of about a week, different times of the day. And so you see the whole range. So, yeah, even then, in, you know, one of the four surveys, we got to 93% saying that you still got stalls available.
Yeah.
Kind of under that worst-case condition. So that would certainly fit what your experience has been.
I'm not sure...
In relation to what you're saying, you know, on the MSI parking spaces that were taken away, and we received some comments from some folks about, "Well, now you're taking more parking away from downtown." But I can see more times than not, when I'm driving down Jackson and I'm looking along there, there are still vacant parking spots on Jackson Street.
True.
I don't know whether I would have gone quite as high as you did as far as increasing the number of permits, but I'd probably live with it. And then, as far as the monthly, that's $4 a year. And the quarterly, eh, $20. Annual, between the quarterly and the annual, annually's a pretty good deal.
I was going to go the other way with John. I was going to say, make it 25 new permits, eliminate the backlog altogether and give a little headspace, because even with the extra spaces, I don't think we'll still max out the lots by any means.
Well, I, the reason I had that opinion is I'm kind of going with, if you're trying to fill all your apartments, if you've got them all filled, you don't have enough apartments. If there's a small percentage of people trying to get into the apartments that are still vacant, you're probably okay. And that's...
Chief Duke is here. I'm glad you came up, Dave, because I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask you anyway, so go ahead.
Just for clarification, checked with our permits this morning. We have 28 on the waiting list now. There are no permits coming open the end of this month, which is the end of this week, and we have three that will be open in May and six in June. So even if we don't do anything, the waiting list is probably just going to increase.
Question that I had, do you have any idea, when we're talking about overtime parking and citations issued, how many are actually written in the parking lots as opposed to on the street? Do we have a lot of parking in overtime in the parking lots over the three-hour period?
The majority percentage is mostly on the streets.
I got one.
You got one?
I'm not very happy about it.
Did you pay it?
Yes, I paid it. I could have got it fixed.
No. We have to do our job. Go back and remember our conversations we've had quite some time ago about why we did what we did on lowering the price dramatically for parking permits. And that was to get the business owners and the residents off of the streets and to get them in the parking lots. We have accomplished that to a great task. It's really, really working well. The first thing that I've noticed when, in your data, Les, is that I now know that we do not need any more parking lots right now, because these are not being used all the way. I would support going to 150. That was the number that I had in my mind. I'm not sure that there's a justification in raising the cost of the permits. I mean, what do you want to accomplish by doing that? I think it's very important that we stay above the cost of university permits, obviously. We still want to encourage people to get off the street and park in the parking lots. And so I think if we raise it to 150, leave the prices where they're at, let's see where we're at with that. And, you know, if then, if we're still, if we start reaching a higher occupancy rate within the parking lots and we still have a backlog on permits, then, you know, water seeks its own level, and then perhaps it's time to raise the level of the price a little bit. So that would be my thought.
I still like chiseling down the waiting list a bit more and encourage people to take advantage of the system and put in there's extra five, to make it 155.
I am more in favor of doing this by steps. Instead of saying, "We're going to go from 120 to 150 or 155," that's about a 30% increase. And I think I would be more comfortable with saying, "Okay, let's go up with a 10%, 15% increase." And if that doesn't smooth out the situation, then we can, you can always move it up. It's a lot more difficult to move it down.
Well, my argument, John, would be that moving it up, adding another 10 permits is not going to solve the situation. We have the availability, availability, uh, huh?
Ability.
Ability and availability is what I wanted to say. Parking spaces within the parking lots right now to accommodate 20 more permits.
We're probably just shifting it every three hours, anyway.
So if we could sell 20 more permits and get those cars off the street, then I think we're accomplishing really what we want to do. I don't know where we need to go with this, because we're just advising, this has got to be a council discussion, I suspect. So I guess what I would recommend, and we'll see what you guys think about this, is put your recommendation down, is to take information that we've given you today, how we feel about it, and bring it to the council. Let's get it on the council agenda, and we'll make a decision as to how we're going to go from there.
Yeah, certainly, we can go ahead and schedule with full council. I guess I'm not quite sure if this group has a recommendation in terms of numbers, because I'm hearing a range.
Well, I'm saying 150 and no price increase.
Right.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
That's a little premature there.
So I'm hearing 155, 151, I'm not sure, 45 or something over here, so. And we can report it that way.
We can have an open discussion at council. There's no reason we can't do that.
Certainly.
And especially in comparison with U of I rates.
Yeah, we'll find that out. Yeah.
Well, why don't we do that?
Certainly.
Just bring it to the full council on as an agenda item, and we'll have a discussion and we'll have a chance to digest this a little bit more and...
Yeah. You guys might come around to the right way of things.
Probably not. He's buying lunch next time. Okay.
Thank you.
Any more business to come before this council?
I don't think so.
Committee, not council.
Council committee.
Committee?
Council committee.
Hearing none, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.